I'm sorry folks, I get a little bit sensitive. If I could remember all the words, I'd start singing the Heinz ketchup commercial. Hmm? Yeah. 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 Um, Senator, would you like to hear this name?
Pray with me, please. Father, thank you for this day and thank you for this time that we have to come together and hear from our citizens and make the decisions that best serve each and every one of them. And be with us, guide us as we make those decisions and be with all of us as we go to our separate ways to our homes tonight. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Ron, would you like to recite a pledge? All right. And as I say at every meeting, the rules of the quorum inter affect are in effect. It's called treat each other with respect and act like adults. That's all it is. Okay? Um, like I said, 4.1 was a mistake. That's not supposed to go on until the end of July or the second meeting in July. So that's moved out tonight. Next thing up is citizens' comments. Ms. Bev, you're the first one up.
Good evening. My name is Bev Stevens and I live at 279 Partridge Drive. I am here tonight to speak on item 7.3, which is Board of Adjustments Positions. I am the current Chair of Board of Adjustments. There are three openings and we have three of our members who have agreed to be reappointed. Gary Nichols and Herb Harker are on the regular Board of Adjustments and have agreed to be reappointed if council approves. David Cross is a current alternate who is also up for renewal, but we would like to see him moved to the board in the position that we have opened from the resignation. There is also an alternate open if you choose. We have two. We are allowed to have three. So if you choose to add an alternate, we would greatly appreciate that. But my recommendations are Mr. Nichols, Mr. Harker, and Mr. Cross. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
Yep? Hi, I'm David Black. I'm at 1419 Seattle Lane. Oh, Mr. Robbins isn't here. I'm really trying to choose him. Um, so 7.5 is the mud. They want, they have some new tract of land and they want to put, have us agree to have it in their mud, which I don't see a problem with. But I had some questions. In the city's resolution, it seems to acknowledge that we had a public hearing or maybe it's, or that there should be one. I'm not sure if we had one or what. So if my questions are a little redundant, apologize. This, the entire development, this, it's a bridge rock trails development went through the city of Rockwall. This is not a kind of Chisholm thing, but they have since bought, the development has since bought a tract of land that goes into Rockwall's ETJ. And so they want to know if they can bring their mud into it. It's a huge development. It's like 3,200 homes. We've only developed about 175 way over at FM 548. The new tract is right above Sonoma Verde across the street from Edwards Road. And they make a, they talk a lot about a need for sewer and stuff. It says to quote, "There is a necessity for the improvements above described because the tract is located within an area that is experiencing substantial and sustained residential growth, is urban in nature, and is not supplied with adequate water, sanitary, sewer and drainage facilities and roads." It seems like a strange question to ask that after they've been approved. So I don't know if they always knew they couldn't handle the 30, full 3,200 homes and they're going to figure it out or what, but it looks like their solution right now is to buy that tract of land, which they've done, which connects their development to our city and our ETJ and Edwards Road. Their development's huge, it's three miles long, going from 550 over to 548, as you can imagine with 300 homes. But they seem to want to put a, possibly a sewage treatment plant right in that new tract of land that they bought. Or perhaps they want to connect to Sonoma Verde's sewer line, which I guess would be okay if it works. So that's sort of my question is, what are they going to do there with their mud? Their mud has to provide water to their people. They have to provide sewage to their people and everything else. If they do put a facility, it'll probably be either at Berry Creek Tributary 1, which is just across from Sonoma Verde. In fact, it goes through Sonoma Verde. Or it could be Berry Creek, which goes into a large lot development in the southwest corner of Edwards Road versus 548. They need those creeks because, you know, they'll process the wastewater and then they'll put it back in the creek system. That's a normal, a normal thing, but of course that water will go through either Sonoma Verde or this large development in that corner. So I'm just wondering about that. Also, I wonder if they want access to Edwards Road and League Road and how that would affect this. The, their development will eventually be very well connected because the outer loop is going to go through it. And they're already connected to 550 and 548, so I don't know if we are impacted by any road issues or not when they connect that development because they cannot do that. Then the only other different subject, 7.7, that's about a development agreement with Oak National Development. And I just, you know, given, given how trilogy's development agreement by a former city council brought in high-density lots and resultant strain on infrastructure, I'm just wondering that we will not do that? I'm hoping we will not do that and we'll try to abide by the comprehensive plan. However, when I look in the packet, they're going to have, you know, over 330 small lot, lots right around City Hall here, and that would be not optimal to the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Senator. All right. Dick, how do you say your last name? Demeen? Mr. Demeen?
Mayor and Council, my name is Dick Demeen and I'm one of the co-owners of Blackjack's disposal. We are aware that tonight we'll be considering how to move forward with regard to your trash hauling contract. We submitted a unsolicited proposal a little over a week ago, and we think that that proposal provides many more benefits to residents here in McLean and Chisholm versus the contract that you currently have in place. First of all, we're much closer to McLean and Chisholm than the current contractor is. We're straight down 276 as opposed to being on the other side of Dallas. We also have subscription routes servicing county residents that were in Rockwall County almost every day. So if there was ever a need for us to double back into McLean and Chisholm city limits, it'd be very easy for us to do so. Our residential service, I think, is better than the service that you have now. Our proposal includes using smaller trucks, which would be less wear and tear on your pavement and city streets. We offer a variety of billing services. According to the website, your current contractor bills everybody quarterly. We would let each resident choose for themselves whether they wanted to be billed monthly, quarterly, semi-annually, or annually. We have a better household hazardous waste collection program than your current contract has. Your current contract has a once-a-year annual event. We have a once-a-week pickup at the residence's front door. We do this very service in Rockwall and here currently, and it is very well liked by the residents in those two cities. Our commercial services, because we're nearby, we're able to have once or twice a week pickups for your commercial customers. According to the contract, I only saw one time a week option for your current contract. Our residential service includes us sending a text reminder to residents as we approach their neighborhood in case they happen to forget that they put out the trash on that particular day. That's part of our standard service. Our dumpster pricing is far lower for the commercial and demolition contractors that you have doing construction projects in McLean and Chisholm. Our dumpster prices for commercial, not only do we have the twice-a-week option, but our options are less expensive, less expensive than what you're currently paying. And despite all the additional services that our residential program has, we're less expensive on our proposal than what you're currently paying. So for all those reasons, I think that our program is superior and I would like the opportunity to have our proposal considered as well. I'd be glad to take any questions.
We can't ask questions?
Understood. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. If there's no other citizens' comments, 6:47, citizens' comments are closed for the evening. Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to item six, consent agenda 6-1 through 6-7. Council, if your current agenda needs to be pulled off, if not, I'll consider a motion to approve all seven items on the consent agenda.
Consent agenda. I have a question about fire. If there's a fire call, is there a sheriff that goes out at the scene?
It could depend on the type of fire call that it is. Typically-
So it's not always followed by a fire?
It depends on the policy of the sheriff's office and I can vary from county to county. Previous county that I worked in, as a deputy, we responded to a majority of them, but we didn't respond to all of them. The other thing is it depends on what type of fire. They might, they might not.
I just need some verification on that.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Six-1 through 6-7.
Six-1 through 6-7.
Got a motion, you have a second? All right. Any discussion? Not? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. So that unanimous. All right, moving on to item 7.1, discussion and action regarding the moving members of the Planning and Zoning Commission from office.
We've had some issues with actually having people showing up to the home.
Can everybody hear?
We have issues making sure that we have quorum at the P and Z meetings as well as, you know, just having BOA have all the people that they need. So making sure that we have enough alternates to call if you're not able to attend the meeting. And there's been some issues where certain individuals, and I did ask our staff if they've been contacted to follow up in regard to issues with items on the agenda. And my responses were, I was disappointed to hear that they did not follow up with staff. There's also, I took the, I took the time to actually contact multiple applications. We have over 14 applicants apply, which is actually pretty high for this. And I thought that was a wonderful opportunity, which would make some changes for those who really want to serve our community now. So mainly the issue with the making quorum is a problem because if we don't have it, it affects the applicant as well as our city public hearings. You know, that costs the city as well as the applicants. But we're just trying to make sure that we're doing what we're doing, just to make sure that we have people to actually show up. And I think that that's, I know it's a voluntary condition, I know, but at the end of the day, I think that we're making a good change in this by making the decision to remove these individuals from planning.
So were these two individuals notified that they would be, or were they allowed to resign? Was that ever put in place?
No, the, they, there's a, there's a code in Planning and Zoning that you have to have a majority vote to do that. That's all that I will say about that. Now, as far as if Ms. City Secretary contacted them, I don't know.
I'm just wondering if they were given enough notice to the point that they would have been alerted, that they would have been removed by the city council. And I don't-
One thing I will say in talking to Michael, Michael, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but city council, they serve a role of the council as a member appointed for a term limit or for a timeframe. You can be removed.
I understand the procedure. I'm just hoping that they're giving out the opportunity and responding to the court. So I understand the procedure. I'm just questioning whether or not they're able to see.
Well, I know what Ms. Balkin is trying to say is, you know, there are certain mechanisms. For those, for those of you that are out in the audience, planning and zoning are, as we call P and Z, there are certain, certain timeframes that have to be met on things that come before them. If they fail to show up to make a quorum, there are timelines and, and time that ticks and can expire on whether or not this city council and the P and Z can either approve or disapprove something, you know, whether it's unanimous, whether it's with conditions. And when we don't have a quorum of P and Z and they don't show up, sometimes that forces an issue onto our plate that we may not be able to stop because they didn't show up to do what they were appointed to do. That is, that is becoming a problem as well because there are people that are not showing up.
Yeah, I recognize this. I was on P and Z for a period of time.
Right.
And there were times that we didn't have a quorum because people weren't showing up. So I just want to make sure that-
Right. I understand.
... so be it.
And then also make sure to understand that this is not, like, there's also alternates? We have plenty of alternates. So there should be no excuse for our city secretary to find somebody else to make a quorum. You know, all they have to do is respond and say, "Hey, I'm coming," or "Hey, I'm not coming," you know, so that she can be able to do her job. You know, and then one thing you'll see on this agenda is, you know, like, tonight, there's going to be an item on the agenda later on and we're going to talk about things that happened at P and Z because we didn't have a quorum, you know? And so, and it, you know, so anyway, so these individuals, like I said, that this is, this is a consistent pattern.
Yeah, I'm not arguing against the process. I just want in fairness, if that's been, you know, the quorum, and so be it.
You're more than welcome to ask the staff and, you know, what their opinion is on that. But I'm just looking at, they are, they are paid by the city. And it, every one of us can reach out to them. If they have an issue with an item on the agenda, you should be able to pick up the phone, send an email and say, "Hey, I don't understand that."
I'm convinced everybody's done their due diligence now.
Though, that's on that particular one. Um, so I'll entertain a motion on the removal of two individuals and then we can talk about the appointments of individuals to P and Z.
I would like to make a motion to remove Daniella Svendahl and Brad Martin from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, now it's, if not, I'll, I'll vote on this so we know for sure. Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Senator? Yeah?
Aye.
So that unanimous. All right. Now moving on to the second part of that agenda. Although my technology is, I'm not working that good. Also included in that particular agenda item is the recommendations for the Planning and Zoning. On Planning and Zoning, the recommendation is to keep Mark Kipit, Robert Rode, or the five that will be on board. Mark Kipit, Robert Rode, Chris, Chris Fries. Oh, is it a second agenda item? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Then moving on to the next one. I apologize. All right. The five Planning and Zoning commissioners that we're looking at, Mark Kipit, Robert Rode, Chris Fries, Gail, am I saying it right? Gail Dale? Guile Dale? And Harry? And I'm probably going to butcher the last name. Eoff. Okay. In addition to the five regular members of the three alternates, in this case, they would step in in the absence of one or more members that are on the five that I just read. Those three alternates would be Michael Easter, Jose Velazquez, and Thomas, how do you call it? Hertz? Does this include the Board of Adjustments? Okay, so that's the second one. Okay. So that's that one. All right, I'll entertain a motion to appoint those five members and the three alternates for P and Z.
I'll make a motion to appoint the five chosen and then the three as alternates.
Got a motion? Do I have a second?
I've got a second.
I've got a second? Any discussion?
Just a quick comment.
Yes, sir.
I know Guile Dale personally and I know that he has a history of having participated in P and Z in the past.
Okay.
And so you've had many, many conversations, experienced, intelligent, very positive, outgoing person, so I think he'd be a choice to serve. As far as Mark Kipit, obviously Mark is a figure in the Chisholm politics and helped with the comp plan. He's been a leader on P and Z, so definitely in support of this position as well. And then Mike Easter is a neighbor of mine. I think he's an attorney, very smart fellow, engaged, always giving his opinions, which I sometimes consider, sometimes not, but he's always a very person of conversation with, but definitely has an interest. Dan? Show that unanimous. All right. Now moving on to the second part of that agenda. Although my technology is, I'm not working that good. Um, also included in that particular agenda item is the recommendations for the planning and zoning. On planning and zoning, the recommendation is to, uh, keep Mark Kipit, Robert Rody, um, for the five that, that will be on board. Mark Kipit, Robert Rody, Chris, Chris Fries. Oh, is it a second agenda item? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Then moving on to the next one. I apologize. All right, um, the five planning and zoning commission commissioners that we're looking at. Mark Kipit, Robert Rody, Chris Fries, Gail, am I saying it right? Gail Dale? Guile, Guile Dale and Harry, and I'm probably going to butcher the last name. Heeaw. Okay. Um, in addition to the five regular members of the three alternates in this case, um, they would step in in the absence of one or more members that are on the five that I just read. Those three alternates would be Michael Easter, Jose Velazquez and Thomas... Hertz? Um, does this include the board of adjustments? Okay, so that's the second one. Okay. So that's that one. All right, I'll entertain a motion to appoint those five members and the three alternates for P and Z.
I'll make a motion to appoint the, uh, five, uh, chosen and then the three as alternates.
Got a motion? Do I have a second? I've got a second. Any discussion?
Just a quick comment?
Yes, sir.
I, I know Guile Dale personally and, uh, I know that he has a history of having participated in P and Z in the past.
Okay.
And so, you've had many, many conversations, kind of experienced, intelligent, very positive, outgoing person. So I think you'd be a choice to serve, uh, as far as Mark Kipit, obviously Mark is a figure in, in the Chisum politics and helped with the, uh, plan. He's been a leader on P and Z, so definitely in, in support of this position as well. And then Mike Easter is, is a neighbor of mine. I think he's an attorney, very smart fellow, engaged, always giving his opinions, which, which I sometimes consider, sometimes not, but, uh, he's always a very person of conversation with, but definitely has an interest.
Attorneys are known to do that.
Well, they talk a little bit.
Um, and don't forget, we got Robert Rody sitting here.
Mr. Rody.
He's, he's been instrumental on P and Z as well.
Mainstay on P and Z.
All right, I've got a motion. I've got a second. If there's no further discussion, I'll do a roll call vote.
Aye. All right.
Balkin?
Aye.
Ms. Jennifer?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, show that unanimous. All right. Yes, I'm going to go back up to another second. Seven point three appointment of board of adjustment. The recommendations are for the reappointment of the following members, Gary Nickel? Gary Nickel? David Cross and, or Parker? Yeah, um, there's two existing alternates, but another can be appointed. Um, the next, the appointment will be Clark, is it Bowring? Okay, I hope I said that right. I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
I make a motion to accept the, to approve the nominations for board of adjustments.
Yeah, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, it's now open for discussion if we have any discussion on that one. If not, I'll do a roll call vote if you do it.
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Tutter?
Aye.
Show that unanimous. All right, now we'll move on to seven point four, consider renewal of the citywide solid waste and recycling contract. Conrad?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, the city council requested staff to evaluate the fires or the current city contract agreement, um, with community waste disposal, CWD, as well as to evaluate potential bid providers, whether we wanted to continue with the existing contract, which the current contract allows, um, or to, um, go out to bid. So that's your decision tonight. That's what you want to do. The current provider, CWD, based on the, the contractual requirements, must be notified by the end of this month, um, if the city's intent is to go out to bid, um, or it automatically, um, rolls over, you know, for five more years. And, and this is very, um, it's five and five, but very common in this industry to have. Um, and based on the cost to start up, the process for the cans and, and the investment, that's, that's why it's a little bit, potentially could be received as a little bit longer contract. The city also still has the option to go out for competitive bidding on a new contract. Um, there's definitely interest, um, as we heard tonight, um, from others to bid on a new contract. So, um, the, with any, with any contracts, and now I'm just personally telling you, um, there's ups and downs, um, and there's been some issues with community waste, but there's been some real positive, you know, and they've sought these, I mean, throughout the contract to, to deal with that. So, um, that's what I'll leave to you to discuss and decide whether you want to, um, continue on with the current contract, um, or start a bidding process.
All right, here's, here's my question for you, Conrad. I understand that the contracts, as we have to notify them by June thirtieth, which is Friday, okay? But their contract actually expires when?
December thirty first.
So December thirty first, but we have to give them basically six months prior notice. So even though there's a possibility we could say we want to open it up for bids, doesn't mean we can't at the last minute decide they're still the best option as long as we gave them notice before Friday.
Right.
Okay, just want to make sure I'm... Council's doing that part of it. Okay. All right, um, I'll entertain a motion to, um, consider renewal.
I entertain a motion, um, for renewal, um, for renewal.
Okay, I have a second.
Second.
Okay, now I've got a motion and a second. I'll take them.
Um, I would like to talk about, um, when we talk about renegotiating, um, to discuss about a reduction in the rate, what would that look like to transfer the administration billing from them so that we can have it with... So I would like to be able to hear that from members, um, to address that. And I, what is the reason for that?
Um, I, I think that, um, they're incentivized to meet with us. They're, we had a recent meeting with their president and their vice president and their, their representative here in the city. Um, I think if you decided to, to continue on with this, this contract, um, within the next, I mean, no more than a month to get to the, just completely back to you, um, for potential changes in the contract if there are. But specifically the items that you've identified will be main topics of discussion. But I would anticipate going through the entire contract and, and, obviously, they're a business, they're in it to make money, but obviously we're in it to represent our residents and get the best, best deal. So we would definitely negotiate that way throughout the entire contract.
Is there anything in the contract that you felt that needs to be addressed other than the issues of building administration?
Well, building administration is normally not, um, generally a city would do that building administration. Um, I would like to, I would like to see it open up, which I'm sure they would too, to our, our city and ETJ and put a blanket over both of them, um, and require everybody in that, in that domain to be part of the contract. Um, definitely things with, with potentially things to discuss on, on complaints. And there's certain things that are in the current contract, but if some of those complaints turn into, well, you'd have to evaluate them based on the different types, but, um, something that they'd be incentivized not to have complaints.
Also, I want to address the audit issue because I want to hear back. I know that they did Sonoma Verde and that's one of the reasons why we have a meeting. Um, has there been any follow-up about any other audits being conducted inside the city in any neighborhoods that you know about?
My understanding is they're going to go through the entire city and to update their records and to make sure everybody's, they, they understand everybody that's getting the service and that they're properly paying for that service.
Okay, so can you make sure to get with CWD and provide the list of all of the audits they have conducted inside the city?
No, not to put them on the spot, but there are representatives. Okay, yes, to put them on the spot. I'll talk for a second so they can think about that. But there are representatives here if you'd like to directly talk to them, or if not, I definitely can do what you just requested.
If you'd like to ask them.
Nicole, would you like to come up, please?
Make sure you push the button so the light comes on so everybody can hear you.
Mayor, council, Nicole Rayner with community waste disposal.
Uh, JB Sweeney, new waste disposal.
JB, answer the question.
Yeah. So your question is you want the list, what's been audited?
Yes, sir.
And he said we will be doing audit of the whole city, uh, of the city limits. So we have carts not being paid for, people moved out, cart stayed there, the receiving service, uh, free. In essence, that list, we can provide you everything we've done currently. And moving forward, we can send you the list, we want it weekly, uh, that we sent to you once completed the entirety of it, works best for y'all.
So by Friday, I would like to see the current list that you've gone through. So far, I know that you've done Sonoma Verde, but I want to see all the other neighborhoods, you know, because we want to make sure that that audit's conducted because that's kind of affecting, you know, if people are paying or not paying, you got to make sure that they are notified and, hey, you know, this is, you haven't paid your bill, this is the process, with the items on the, on the board hanger. Because we need to make sure that we're improving not only the communication, but also the service on it because we do get complaints. And again, you may not hear a lot of phone calls directly because it's your role, but I know you hear it from customer service, I'm sure, but we need to make sure that we're, we're stepping up to what we need to do on our end, but also CWD. And I believe that we can have a good partnership, but we need to make sure we're staying on top of that.
Yes, we'll have a list to you by Friday.
Awesome, thanks, sir.
Any other questions?
Um, I don't right now. I know that we were working in conjunction with making sure there was information on our city website, um, because in this day and age with social media and the internet, people do a lot more talking on there rather than coming up here and letting us know. And I heard last week people were grumbling about recycle not being picked up in certain areas and I don't know if that's because you don't realize y'all can't just pick up anything. So I just want to make sure we're doing our part to educate them as well on certain types of recycle. It's either got to be packaged, you know, out front or what can and cannot be picked up so that they know so that they're not blaming you guys for something that's been wrong. So I, in my last meeting with y'all, I learned the way, I put some recycle out there. It was wrong, that's why it didn't get picked up. You know, and I can, I can admit that. It was my fault.
Attach them. We can attach them to the cart handles, uh, if we didn't start up. We can recirculate the city and put them in little plastic bags, three fold folders that have all the set materials, not set materials, uh, what to do, not to do, and all that stuff.
Yeah, I, I will posit the thing back, the, the images that y'all have sent, I mean, y'all responded pretty quickly when it happened. And, and I ended up distributing it through all the HOAs around. So whether or not they actually produced the newsletters, UBLAS or social media and actually added those graphics, I just want to say thank you, number one, for the response. And two, for actually providing the graphics because I'm actually shocked that there's people who actually put trash in the blue poly cart. And I thought it's a universal understanding that blue means recycle. And so maybe it's just, it would help if the graphics tended to seem like, hey, this is for recycle only and these are the items that are supposed to go in there. And so it would be helpful. So it is helpful to me that we put that out there. And we do have it on the website, uh, just for all the graphics and stuff.
We have it on our, as well, also. For y'all's sake.
I do. I have one question. During your audit in Sonoma Verde, my trash cans were picked up. When I called to open up an account, uh, which was fine, but I still have not received a bill.
You've not received a bill?
Yes.
Probably hadn't been the bill in cycle yet, but we...
And that's probably, when he called, though, when we met, it was probably two weeks prior to, or a week, two weeks prior to that, when he called to set that up. So we're talking...
Oh, yes, the carts were, no, the, no, the response was very, very loud. I mean, you guys came back and said, I want to make sure that I received the bill.
So is this the issue that you have to deal with the bill yet?
Yes.
All right, guys.
Most people, most people complain when they get their bill.
Thank you.
All right, I've got a motion and I've got a second before any more discussion. I'll take a roll call vote. Hold on.
Aye.
Ms. McFernan?
Aye.
Ms. Balkin?
Aye.
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 Moving on to seven, seven, five, petition for consent, to consent to addition of land to a municipal utility district for River Rock rail municipal utility district number two. Thank you guys, by the way, for being here. All right, Michael, go ahead.
Mayor, members of the council, this is a request to add an additional, uh, two hundred and ninety-seven, almost two hundred and ninety-eight acres of land that is in our extraterritorial jurisdiction to the existing River Rocks Municipal Utility District. It's been in effect since two thousand and twelve, so it's been out there with nothing happening for quite a while. But this is a, a request to add that. We, we reviewed the application and the resolution. Staff would recommend the... Uh, by the way, uh, representative from the district is here, Joshua Bethke, if you have any questions. Bethke, B-E-T. Yes, ma'am?
I do too. Um, the two hundred and ninety-seven odd acres is in our ETJ. The remaining portion of this development, uh, for most of the time period up until recently was in the county, but because of our population size, our ETJ has actually gone out a mile or so past now with that chance of survival.
It puts the majority of this proposed development in our new ETJ. So this two hundred and ninety-eight acres is in, is within that geography as well. But now, because we've expanded, because we have over five thousand residents, to a mile ETJ, and by the way, uh, I've received the authorization to update our ILAs with both counties using the new graphics. I'll do that tomorrow, uh, showing the new ETJ. There's, there's a lot more land in our ETJ now than there was before. This enti, almost entirety of this River Rocks development is now in our ETJ.
So, quick question about the, because I just want to address one of the comments that was made during, uh, public comment regarding the public hearing. Was, was this taken care of? I mean, what, what do you know about the notifications? This is the first time I'm seeing this here at CWD.
Mayor Protim, I'm going to defer to Joshua, who's the attorney for the district.
Okay.
I'm counsel. Josh Bethke with Coats Rose, counsel for the district. Uh, there are no notice public hearing requirements related to the annexation. The requirement that is why we're here today is under the local government code and under the Texas water code, uh, section fifty-four of the Texas water code, seven point oh-one-six requires any land within the municipality's ETJ to require, requires us to obtain the consent of the municipality in order to annex that property. And analogous statute in, uh, chapter forty-two of the local government code, forty-two oh-point-three also requires us to do this.
Oh, look, Michael, you're hot shot now. I mean, no, it's good. It's a positive. Thank you for answering that because there is people that were probably asked if there was proper notifications down and on. So you answered that question. And also, as far as like the, uh, ETJ is concerned, one of the questions that pops up and maybe you want to be able to answer or maybe we'll come back up here, but, um, has there ever been an interest to do a development agreement with the city and the commissioners for this particular development?
Um, it's not something that we've particularly discussed. This is kind of our first step. You know, we don't really have any active plans or can say we, the developer of the project doesn't have any specific plans for development quite yet. So we don't know exactly what it's going to look like out here. It's more of an entitlement thing to get it entitled, get it into the district and then can kind of figure out those things moving forward.
And has there been any discussion about having a fire service contract with our fire district?
Yes, that is, that is our plan. Uh, part of, when I was emailing Conrad about this, um, was, that's kind of our next step. We're in the process of drafting something similar to what we've done, uh, with you all for another, uh, municipal utility district, uh, that I represent as well. And so we want to do something similar to that in this case. Yes, that is the plan.
What about, um, given that portion of the funds out of the state, um, what about long, you know, the other side of the...
So we haven't explored all avenues for that quite yet. So, we haven't explored all avenues for that quite yet. Uh, in the meantime, the hope is that the county would be providing the service that they're obligated to provide under this, under the law.
They, they will, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the sheriff, I'm on my own. They will because they're supposed to, because it's within the county. But when you talk of development such as yours, once it starts coming to fruition, how's it start hitting ground if you start moving in? Uh, it's gonna be a heavy burden on the sheriff.
Understood. Yeah, and we're, we're certainly open to any other, uh, service contracts as well.
Uh, what about, and this is a hot topic down here, obviously, you've done your homework and what you do as a volunteer, and that water's...
Yeah, so we're in the process of wrapping up an agreement with Blackland, um, for water to the district.
So it's clear, we call it Blackland, the water supply corporation?
Sorry, thank you.
No, it's, you're breaking the, you're muted, Chris.
What are your plans for sewage on, on the site?
So we currently have a discharge permit through the TCQ, um, and so our plan would be to do a treatment plant on-site. Uh, that's the plan as of now. We're also actively pursuing, um, discussions with North Texas Municipal Water District to see if there's an avenue there as well.
They would, I may have my terms on them, learning terms the last couple of years of development. Is what you're describing what I've been told is called a package plant, right?
Um, I don't know the exact, specific type of plant that, that they're going to be putting out there, but, um, I think commonly referred to as a package plant, yes.
Uh, I was just wanting to make sure I understood what you were getting at. Now, when you talk about talking to North Texas when it comes to sewage, um, I know in discussions about sewer taps and sewer for the city and all that, you know, my understanding of everything that we have, and it may even include some of the developments in ETJ, that our sewer line go up to Buffalo Creek, and then it all goes to the ski, to the sewage pipe down there. My understanding is it's only got a couple more extensions, and that's been knocked out. I don't know, and I can't speak on behalf of North Texas or anything, but it may be getting tapped out pretty quick.
Yeah, and so we have the discharge permit to where we could be, the mud could be the sewer provider to, uh, within the boundaries of the mud for the residents that will be within the mud. I think, from what I understand, my client has been having those discussions. I don't know to what extent they are, um, actual avenues or not.
Uh, you know, I get it. Now, I will tell you, and this is just my experience as the mayor here. When you say discharge and a package plant, you might want to do a good PR in, in with the residents that surround the area, because those, yes, it's a pun, Michael, those are dirty words.
Understood.
So, you know, because I, I can tell you people are coming here when they thought another development was going to be a package plant.
Understood, yeah, I mean, we...
Their information would be correct, it wasn't.
Sure. We, we actively try to give as much information as we possibly can to the residents before they purchase a home within the boundaries of the district. There are also statutory notices that they have to sign, um, with respect to the mud. So we try to be as transparent as possible, and if someone wishes not to purchase a home for that reason, that's...
Just so, I'm, I'm clear, is that you're, you want to have a possible package plant, which is gonna be on the north side near thirty-four?
I don't recall exactly the location.
Okay, um, but you pretty much know that it's pretty tapped out that we're here at the Buffalo Creek location? And would you be able to have that official letter, some, or some sort of rejection from North Texas? Or, or something that's gonna be coming up in the next thirty, forty days, or...
That's not something that I have currently. I don't really know the status of that, if I'm being completely honest, but I can certainly ask my client.
Yeah, that would be helpful for us, just to be clear.
Sure.
Because I'm sure that we're gonna have people asking questions, and to do that would be proactive and...
So just to be clear, you're asking for some sort of rejection, or some sort of response from North Texas?
What exactly is the plan for a package plant? Is that happening? Where is it happening?
Sure.
And also to confirm for, for there's a rejection in regards to the location of the Buffalo Creek location? And, uh, the issue with the petition, um, just so that we're clear, is that you're asking for the land to be sold inside the mud?
Correct, so there's two existing muds out there that were created by the TCQ back in two thousand twelve. They were originally created under a different name, went through a name change and a conversion from a Water Control and Improvement District to a Municipal Utility District back in two thousand twenty-one. And so it's mud two, is the one we're asking for, um, this property to be annexed into. And so if the council, uh, does approve a resolution tonight, the next step would be for the landowner to go to the district itself and go to the board of directors of the district, and then now having the consent of the city, if, if that's what ends up happening, then they go and petition the board, and then the board actually has to take action as well.
What about the subdivision regulations with our confidence of community burn? Have you actually personally reviewed it, or somewhat?
I have not personally, but I know that my client has been kind of in the weeds on, on all of that.
Alright, well, we get Michael for this one. Thank you for coming up, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you all very much.
Yes, sir, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the subdivision regulations, do they apply in this particular, uh, in this mud district, in ETJ?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, let me, let me ask you, and it may be Michael that has to answer this. With them asking for basically two hundred and ninety-seven point some odd acres to go into the mud, does that cause us to relinquish, you know, limited say-so, we have an ETJ over that problem?
Our subdivision rules?
Just want to make sure I'm clear on that, because I don't want to, I don't want to lose anything that we...
Okay, and just to make sure, really, we can require, uh, the fire service contract for our district, correct?
I think, I think the statute, I know, I think the statute allows a certain amount, uh, of, probably most, you know, of money. Make the good bucks. They, uh, there's like even a minimum that you can charge, or something like that.
I was asked this question today as, what would, what would transpire if we voted no on this? What, what effect does that have?
Uh, I mean, it wouldn't go in there, I don't think, well, they'd probably go back to the legislature and probably get whatever they want. Um, because I can say in general without defamation, because of all the money developers pay to the legislature, there's a way to do that. We're about to not have any, as of September first, they're not even gonna come to us.
Right.
Muds are, you know, in our ETJ, the form of consent, so, little to none. Slim, as my dad used to say, slim to none, and slim to slept.
Um, if you don't mind, for...
Yes, sir.
He won't agree with me about the money, but...
Yeah, I'm not gonna speak to that part, uh, but from a technical perspective, um, if it were not to be approved, uh, September first, there's an avenue for us to be able to remove ourselves from the ETJ of the city, and then that would remove the requirement for us to then obtain any city consent, so we could annex it into the mud that way. There's also current, under the current law, aside from the Senate Bill two thousand thirty-eight effective September first, there's also a statutory procedure where if ninety days have passed since we've submitted the initial petition, and there's no action, and then we submit some additional petitions, it's kind of just a time thing, but eventually it ends up that we would be able to go to the TCQ without your consent and leave it up to them to decide. Those are kind of our options.
Thank you.
How much is the total acreage out there? You're adding two hundred and ninety-seven acres, how much?
The total planned acreage is roughly eighteen hundred acres out there.
Eighteen hundred?
Correct, one thousand eight hundred.
How many homes will you be putting out there?
They're expecting about five thousand to six thousand dwelling units out there.
If you have a package plant on site, what do you do with the, with the refuge water that, that's pushed out of the site?
So it could be into like a reuse system that we could end up using for irrigation or things of that, of that nature. That's something I've done in another project where we have a whole reclaimed water system that's used for construction water and for irrigation and those types of things.
Part of it would be put into that kind of a system, I can't see...
Correct.
The total amount being put into that system.
Yeah, and to be honest, I'm not an engineer to know the volumes of those types of things.
But you have history having worked with another development.
Sorry?
You have history having worked with other developments, so you have some understanding of it.
Yes, sir, just not on a volume perspective personally, but...
Whoa.
Thank you. Sure.
Sorry, y'all didn't hear me. I said they could entertain a motion with conditions on that, I was just reminding them of that.
Before I do that, uh, Mr. Coker, was there anything that needed to be changed in this item?
The resolution was reviewed and, and it's, complies with the statutory requirements, so nothing needs to be changed.
Um, I motioned to approve with conditions, specifically to have a fire service contract agreement, um, and also to be open to a, uh, development agreement.
Alright, I've got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, now open for discussion.
Did I hear correctly that y'all were not looking to do a development agreement, or a planned development agreement?
I think what he was trying to tell you, hasn't been discussed on our...
Can you guys hear me? Yeah, this was the first time that a development agreement had come up from my perspective, um, so I don't know my client's temperature on that. And if I, if I can make a, ask for a point of clarification, the motion that was made, was it contingent on a development agreement being approved? Or consideration of a development?
Be considered, okay.
Yeah, because you have to go back to your client, right? But there has to be a definitely contract for fire service.
Yes, understood, thank you. And that's definitely our point.
But if, I guess, so if there's, it's a consideration, I mean, they can easily come back and say, no.
The first part is to motion to approve, uh...
Of just moving this land into that mud.
And to have a contract, with condition with a contract agreement for fire service, and a consideration for a development agreement.
Michael, you have something?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I've worked for you since two thousand twelve, which was when this mud was created. And during that entire time, we've never been contacted about a development for the property that's in that mud.
Alright, Ron, is that asking a question?
No.
Mayor, i- if it helps typically, generally, normally, cities like us would not enter into a development agreement with the mud for several reasons. The contract for services, fire, these, and, you know, all those typical services we have, absolutely. There are political links between the vertical subdivision of the state, excuse me, so it's a seven ninety-one inter-local. That, that is completely separate, so it's fine, we're, we're good there. A development agreement usually presupposes that at some point the property is going to be annexed into the city, and should work out certain, and under, uh, two twelve, one seventy-two D one, we can work out certain land use regulations and things like that. We don't want to bring the mud inside the city, because they've got tax, they've got, they've got taxes, and they've got, they're gonna pay off. We would have to assume all of that debt if we brought the mud into the city. So we, we, I doubt we want to do that, I doubt we want to do that. Uh, our, you know, regular people don't even pay the, probably taxes to support, you know, regular employees. I don't think they're gonna also support a mud. So the development agreement really wouldn't be a consideration. Now, there are other things that you can work with, you know, sort of, sort of agreements for limited purpose annexations, with sales tax, or things like that, um, they wouldn't, you know, be able to vote in the air of elections, or things like that. But just something where, where we could work with them on that, and they would be working with us, uh, because they get some mediation, some, some terms, these taxing, uh, real investment zones, and things like that, they would work with them, lower their taxes, where they want to, you know, double taxes. Some muds will do that, some muds don't, so that's not unheard of. The development agreement is not typically, generally, normal for the city to fire for, just if that happens.
I mean, so do we, I mean, do we want to consider those, those conversations? Exactly what it is, before we...
Well, the problem is that he has to go back to his client, to let him have his, and just, and having some sort of discussion agreement at some point, you know? So he's, this is his first time coming, and none of us have, assuming none of us have spoken to him before.
So...
So it sounded like, and I mean, I, I mean, it sounded like he came here and there, there is a willingness to number one, you want to have a contract with our service, right? And then there, there could be an, a, a third conversation, maybe even a... They could literally come back and say, you know, we don't want to consider development agreements, but we will, we would like to propose another idea. So...
If I, if I may, I can't say with ninety-nine point nine percent certainty that our intention is certainly to work out a fire agreement. Um, as far, as far as the other agreements, those have not been discussed yet, um, but I'm, I'm working on a draft of the, of the agreement, so, for the fire.
So I tell you what, I will go ahead and make it a movement to my motion, to, um, motion to, uh, petition to consent to addition of land to a municipal utility district for River Rock Trail Municipal Utility District Number Two, with condition for a, uh, fire district, uh, twenty-two contract.
Alright, I have a second.
Well, my, my question is, maybe, maybe there's other conditions. Right, but at the moment, currently, like, we have a process.
Exactly, and I think, I'm trying to be fair, because like, this is our first time, and now we hear that, that there is, it's there, so let me go back to my client, and then I'm assuming that there's some other special, who has a session with Conrad, then we'll have it on the agenda, and that's, that, that would be fair, because literally, we definitely have that.
Could we not table it then?
We absolutely have to have.
There, there is a timeline, and that, that's a good question. There might be plenty of time, but I do not know what...
I mean, when are we meeting again? I mean, if we're meeting again in a couple of weeks, I can't imagine the timeline's two, fourteen days.
I, I would agree, it doesn't sound, usually it's something like ninety, a hundred twenty days.
I mean, it just gives us time to process, like, Mr. McClemmon just said, process, maybe come up with some other things that we might have time to think of, I mean...
Well, you brought a good point, but I was thinking it was an issue...
No, 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 no. No, it's, no, 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 and mine wasn't either, specifically that.
And I, quite honestly, I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I wouldn't say, well, the attorney, it seems like a DC guy, and Conrad could probably take the fights, I'm not worried about it. But in, in these types of situations, it, it saves them a lot of time and a lot of money to work with us to do it. Like he said, ninety-nine point nine, I'm a hundred percent sure that they're gonna work out a fire. There's no, they got, no one's gonna live in a, hey, we don't have fire protection, but come live in our mud. No thanks, okay? So we're gonna, they're gonna have fire protection, there's no reason they don't use us for the fire protection. That just all works. And so I, I have no problem with kind of vetting through, if we want to look at some other conditions. You know, I, I wouldn't ask for them for, hey, you know what, give us eight thousand acres for a park, you know, and so... You know, I wouldn't ask for them for, hey, you know what, give us 8,000 acres for a park, you know, and so... They're going to probably go through and say, well, you will wait until September 1st. But some of these other conditions that we might want, they're like, okay, you know what, it's less hassle, it's less time, it's less money, we'll just give them some of these conditions, and we can go for that. My thing is, I don't think there's anything wrong with asking, it would be different if we were pounding our fists and saying, look, we're not going to do this unless you give us 8,000 square acres for a, for a park or something like that. But this is like, hey, you know what, we're probably generally okay with it, but we'd like to ask for a couple of things, and I don't think he, if he was, the conditions were reversed, reversed, I don't think he would have a problem with his client, I mean, just good na, in a good natured, good state discussion trying to ask for certain conditions, so I, I think, I...
And just keep in mind, Wildwood, Wildwood has a fire service contract, which is, I'm assuming that you would...
That's the other one?
Yeah.
No, go ahead.
Timeline as far as statutory timelines for annexation, uh, no, not from a legal perspective.
Okay, will that...
Sure.
Oh, gosh, no, my gosh. We're going to do a date, we're going to do a date, is that okay?
I know, but what happens if you don't have a meeting? And everything holding is done, because you have to untable it, I just prefer to put no action, that way if something happens, you know, I've got some of my crackers, I've got too much fun, you're out of order, but you're still recovering, you have to make it, you know?
So we take no action, no action, and we put it on the next agenda.
I'm just so not...
I would like to remove my question.
Uh, she's going to remove her motion, um, thank you so much for all your help. Alright, so, right now, as it stands, a petition for consent to, consent to addition of land, if you're, um, there'll be no action taken on tonight. That was so convenient, alright, and I, and I... Now that, now, now you have piqued my curiosity, if you can be out of the country, where you're going. I don't blame you, I got nothing. I, I got nothing, if you're going to Italy, I get it, I'd be out of the country too. Alright, um, moving on to 7.6, update on county committees.
We did not meet, uh, every other month, so our next meeting will be in July, and we missed the last one because of the emergency meeting, so I have not, I won't go until July.
Okay, Mr. Tucker?
Likewise, on the 15th of May, we are here, rather than the county consortium, the road consortium, but, you know, I've got some, we get a report every month anyway. And we've gone to 172 months meetings to start with, so my next meeting will be next, in July. But just some highlights, I mean, within the county itself, there's a $2.6 billion worth of projects that are ongoing and being considered, there must be about 15 different projects. Uh, the one project that affects us most is 75, that goes from 80 and 20, uh, up to the 549, and that's in process. Their let dates are open, not finalized, it's expensive, it's been, plus, it's been $202 million. So, I mean, there's lots of facts and figures, and I recommend going to the reports, they could be a lot of that information if you have an interest in this kind of thing.
Absolutely, alright, we'll move on to 7.7, discussion of possible action regarding the development agreement between Oak National Development LLC and the city of McLennan-Chisholm, which is generally located adjacent to McLennan-Chisholm City Hall, county parcel IDs 11447 and 11438. Go ahead, Mike.
Yes, sir, the Planning and Zoning Commission requested that AlTura put together a development agreement for the 148 acres that surrounds City Hall. What you have in front of you, subject to the red lines that Mr. Hollow marked up, is the staff's recommendation for approval on this. Now, I've got the webs here, both senior and the younger webs, to talk about the development agreement. I will let you know that we have received an application for a planned development district, that the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear on the 18th of July for the same 148 acres. I believe that the webs are looking at this development agreement as kind of a guide from y'all to them about what their expectations are and what our expectations are through that. With that said, they're both here to answer your questions.
Anybody's got questions?
Mr. Webb?
Here, push the button, you're not, you're not on yet, there you go.
I think you guys presented this as basically a presentation back in November, and I was called very vividly, because I was, I came out very, very excited moment to add really against it, because it went against our comprehensive plan, and I even recall my mayor pulling me back a bit and saying, slow down. And I, I relished his interests in my fervor. Uh, that being said, I want to make an apology for having almost an outburst at that point in time, so I reconsidered my positions, and I really do want to apologize to you guys, so I'll probably be very quiet soon.
Okay, great, I do have some information I'd like to get out.
So, my name is Todd Winters, I'm with Edith ECD Engineering Firm, I'm a civil engineering project, I've been working in McLennan-Chisholm for almost 20 years, and I'm just happy to be back here. I'm actually excited to present this project to you, because it's not very often that I get to present a project that has a 44-acre park and 40% open space, so I think you're going to appreciate what we're doing. But I wanted to start with the handout you have there, as far as who AlTura is, they started in 1972, building houses in Crandall, and then expanded in Kaufman County to Rockwall County, and you can kind of read through that there. The webs developed their first McLennan-Chisholm subdivision in 2004, so they've been here a long time, built more houses than anyone in this area, and have been established here, they moved their corporate office here in 2011, and have built subdivisions, you can see, we have listed there Kensington Park, Sonoma Verde, Chisholm Crossing, and they just recently opened Heritage Estates on Pullen Road, which is just north of here, a short, a short run there. So, they've been here a long time, been very established, one of the things that we'll talk about later in this is that they're having their corporate headquarters here. All the material that they buy, all the taxes that are paid on that come to the city here, so that's a huge benefit to the city as well. Talking about the park, if you look at the handout, or the drawing that we have there, you can see all the way the soccer, football, lacrosse fields all lay out there, and you can kind of see the amenities that this brings to this. And you can see City Hall in the picture there, so where we're sitting is everything to the west and everything to the south of us here will all be open space and park area, where the parking lot adjacent to back there. So, this, AlTura purchased this 148 acres over a year ago, I can't remember the timeline, that's 148 acres that completely surrounds City Hall and the, and the fire department, as you can see, it's not actually owned yet, so... This, uh, this park is 44 acres, and this, the, the value of the land itself is $2.2 million, and it's going to take at least, probably in the range of $2 million to build this park. So we're talking about a huge expense that's going to be covered by AlTura and through the residential volume of this thing. So, there's a huge benefit to the city here, this is something that doesn't exist out here, as you know. It's, and just to kind of cover the high points of the park, there's a one-mile trail around it, you see the little red line that goes around it, that is exactly one mile, so people can come here and walk and exercise and use that. It has two pavilions, one with a restroom, has a playground, two pickleball courts, which we're very excited about, pond, parking lot, soccer, all, you see all the different fields and all the different age groups, the field sizes are, you know, are obviously for different age groups there. So, this land lies in the Heritage Center on your designation on your future land use plan, which, which calls for, you know, parks, trails, open space, ponds and creeks, and we have every single one of those in this development, so it's a huge, huge benefit there as well. So, the next page, you can kind of see what, you know, youth athletics and what opportunities that would bring here, and how, there's, there's nothing like this around, and how, how great this would be for just the economy, just the people, the children, just getting outside, and the, just, if you kind of read that right there, just the purpose of it, is to promote the organized sports and activities outside. So, there's, you know, this is going to be a destination for practice, for tournaments, and there's a lot of, a lot, as everyone knows, if you have any kids that play, there's a huge shortage of field and places to practice, and so this will, this will be a huge benefit for that. So, I think it's part of why we're calling this Legacy Park too, because this is going to start something here that doesn't exist, and I think it will be a huge benefit to the, to the community, at no cost to the city, that I think is a, is a big point to bring up there too. So, uh, we are here asking for you to approve a developers' agreement, which clearly just defines what we're proposing to do and for our side, and then for the city as well. Kind of covering the high points of the actual subdivision itself, we do have our, our larger 80-foot lots on the north side, which could actually funnel the FM 550 out here just past the fire station. We have spaced our driveways accordingly, so that we would have a, meet text out requirements, we will do a traffic study, we require turning lanes and things like that. We do have a really nice entry feature, a divided entry, we've left some green space up there so that we can do something really nice, so we can have that sensitive pipeline, we'll have something, a very extensive landscape across the front up there as well. This whole thing will be managed by an HOA, the entry features, the park that you see back there in the back. I think in the developers' agreement, it said it was 13.5 acres, I think that's transposed, because it's actually 15.3 acres, so if you add all this up, we have 57 acres of open space in this, in this development, which is 39.5% open space. So, that's an incredible ratio that, that we just don't see in this business anymore, as you guys, and I'm sure you can attest to that. So, uh, the values of this are going to be above $150 million of value added to the tax rolls here for the city. The revenue that these, these practice fields will generate will help with maintenance of that, I think this is a, a huge benefit to the city in so many ways. If you continue looking through the handout that I sent you there, you see some of the elevations of the homes that will be built, I'm sure you guys are familiar with AlTura homes and the quality that they have here. We are also going to do the masonry, and all these facilities always have, and we're not asking for a hardy plank or changing any of the building codes like that. You can see in the, the developers' agreement at the end back there, it talks about keeping all the same roof pitches and setbacks and stuff, and not trying to minimize any of those. And, let's see, there's open space, entry features, and elevations, I think that's kind of the high points of this, and we will have, these will all be served by sanitary sewer. There's, as you know, there's a forest main that runs out front here, we will have a lift station that will utilize that forest main, it was actually designed to accommodate this and the school that's planned to the, just to the east of this track as well. Uh, it does have the capacity, and the number of units that we have here is covered, and the capacity that was designed originally with Sonoma Verde, so... That is also accounted for in the Buffalo trunk main that was mentioned earlier, so we'll be fine there. We've also talked with High Point Water Supply, they've done their initial study, they do have a 12-inch water line that runs out in front of City Hall here, which we will utilize that. They did ask us for a water tower site, so somewhere on one of these high points, we will have, most likely have a water tower, that will provide pressure and flow for fire protection and for domestic use, so that's the water and sewer side. We will...
Sure.
One moment, so, you mentioned about High Point, and you have a relationship with High Point, and I did ask them if they, they received a world, some sort of information from you. Did you use a different name other than Oak National?
Well, yeah, we've had several different names of this particular subdivision. We've worked with our engineer Tyler Henderson, and he did his modeling based on a layout probably a year ago.
That's helpful, thank you.
Yeah.
I do, first off, thanks for coming and wanting to talk to me, I do have a question, look, with the parking lot, have you seen, y'all have been here quite some time, so have you seen any type of design for a heritage park that, that was supposed to be originally for this particular area, for the City Hall and around it, have you seen any of them?
Yes, directly behind City Hall, at one time there was some park plan, but it was relatively small, and it just had a few baseball fields, and some small parking, but that was a long time ago.
I was just curious, because we were actually talking about that recently, we just found out that this particular property, you know, is it going to affect the looking field where that instance is, and we have this parking lot, and the year it was going to go, so we were first trying to understand if there was a consistent area design, if there was originally being intended for some higher property, whose market community, um, location, for events and special activities and stuff, so I wasn't sure if you were part of that, or anybody from the group?
No, we did not do any of that planning, this parking lot is, you know, easily moved or manipulated, it just seems to be the right spot for access. And we do show additional driveway on the west side right here, to relieve any trap, keep too much traffic coming out of here. As you can see, there's still a good bit of land right over back there, that could be utilized for baseball fields or additional fields if you wanted, I think the 44 acres, we're going to have as many activities as you could possibly want there, but I, I don't think that this in, in any way keeps you from continuing that park plan if you want, if you wanted to add to this.
Can you talk about the first act, the tax code, chapter 311, anything about that?
Yes, a TURS, basically...
Just for reference, it's in the section 2.3 on the...
So, it's just a tax increment district zone, basically, that's set up for just this boundary, just the people who live in here, the tax money that comes from that goes into that account, which can help with any maintenance, shortfalls for the park, or, you know, it was designated for the, to the city so that you can use it as needed, so it also helps with that. So, we think that the, the fields are going to generate enough revenue and rental fees and tournaments and things like that, that it will pay for the maintenance of it, but any shortfalls could be covered by the TURS.
Awesome, yeah, because I personally, in terms of parks, baseball, people, sports area, I could see that there is a shortage of places to play, and there's, I mean, I see cars just parked on places they shouldn't be parking on, just to attend the, the soccer game, so I get it.
Well, one of the things, I've talked to the webs, one of the things with this, with this rendition this year is, um, the rock ball camp is a hell of a, relaxing and something, um, you know? 30, 40 years ago, there were a handful of soccer fields and soccer, I think, sport within the field, and the latest thing that was kind of, outside of pickleball, I don't want to get beat up, and I know that's been very popular now. My mom called me yesterday and said, well, I should pick the ball, you're sitting right now, because they were televising pickleball up there, the race, but lacrosse is... But lacrosse is kind of very, very popular, and you now have, I believe, high school and middle school, or just high school. Okay. So, it is, it has picked up to the point from little kids on up to high school playing lacrosse, and there is a shortage of locations for them to play, and whether having to travel, kind of like when I was a kid, the school I went to, if you wanted to be on the swim team, it was an hour and a half drive to the school where you had to go to, you know, and then hockey came up, and the only place you could go play hockey was at the club, because it was organized with ten other facilities. And that would practice everything. So, these fields are designed with lacrosse in mind, and having talked to a couple of guys I met that are coaches for lacrosse, they reiterated what the web's were telling me, that there are teams and associations that are going to pay to utilize these fields because of spending that money, I swear, and they're bringing it into our city to use in speed. And that sport picking up may, maybe a point to, you know, talk, discuss, negotiate, whatever, with ISD about assisting or utilizing lacrosse. Those are, it would depend for that to work. Just, just food, just food for thought for now.
So, on two point four, are you okay that we're jumping around a bit?
You bet.
So, on two point four, onsite improvements, do you have any ideas, what, you know, what are some of your ideas on that, or you haven't gone that far, or you haven't gotten anything with the onsite improvement?
Well, I believe...
On two point four?
Yeah, and it talks about the maintenance bonds and everything for everything, all the infrastructure that we build, which is the water, the sewer, the storm sewer, and lets the, well, obviously, water won't be part of this because it's High Point, but the sanitary sewer, the storm, the streets, all the improvements there, and that will all be covered as far as these onsite improvements. Now, if you want to talk about parks and things like that, that's actually covered separately, but that's, we will have a trail and a creek area there, the, and an open space area, and obviously, open to the residents and stuff. So, that's not necessarily what this is talking about. This is talking about more of the infrastructure that we will build that will be inherited by the city, that we will put a maintenance bond on, and I believe that's a two-year period where we go back after two years and fix anything that's not working exactly like the inspector was wanting.
Yeah, because you mentioned that, you know, yes, the maintenance law, I think that, I'm just, I'm referring to, is there, is this, is there a set idea of what you wanted to be using to address two point four? Is the onsite improvement work to my idea of that, and we suggest ideas that, that we believe that they do?
Yes, and I, and I do believe that this, this TERS will be a negotiation as to what's covered and how we, how we get there, what's, what's a part of that and what's not. I mean, like, tonight, we're talking about the development agreement, the TERS would be the, the next negotiated item that would, we would clearly define with staff and with your approval. So, yes, you can make suggestions as to what, what would be covered by that.
Jim, if it helps a little bit on the TERS, the tax increment, the investment zone, so it's there's a process that we like to follow, have resolution, notify all the taxing units, have public hearing, and so you create the investment zone, and what you do in that creates investment of all the properties that are in that zone by giving what's called a base value. Everybody knows what the base value of a property, that's where it starts. Then, a year after the TERS begins and gets present from the, once they've gotten the improvements, whatever, that they're going to build, that they build the investment zone, take the base value and improvements, that's the value that's taxed. And so, the value of the improvement over the base value is what's given a tax, and there's a, and there's a divying up sixty, forty, seven, thirty, eighty, twenty, whatever that is, the city keeps sixty and gives the developer about forty percent of the increase in tax. Wherever the base value is, it's always there, but it's taxed only on the improvements, the value of the improvement. Just to clarify that.
And that's called your increment. So, when it's tax increment, there it is. That's a good example of what it is.
That's why I said a tax increment reinvestment.
Aren't you glad I asked?
Conrad was going to say that, but he couldn't get his mouth moving fast enough because his mustache was weighing down.
So, as far as like, making some amendments or just kind of talking, is your group willing to sit down and have conversations with the mayor or any other, you know, council member? I mean, it's, does that sound like a possible thing that you would be willing to do?
Of course. You mean to discuss what would be covered by the TERS, yeah.
Or...
Yeah. It's definitely the next step that we want to define and understand, make sure it's beneficial for everybody, so.
I, I agree. I like this next step with what we all have brought forward. I think we need to digest it a little bit and have a meeting with you to go through this a little bit more, on, you know, your ideas and the things that, once we go through this a little bit deeper, our own suggestions, where we can come to that. Yeah, because this is, this is just a special foster action. Guys, I would like to be able to go through this a little bit more and have a meeting within the near future to discuss this a little more, more in depth. I think we can end the next week if we can.
We're giving direction for staff so we can start having a meeting. I'm suggesting next week because it's happening quickly. Does that sound useful to you? But next week.
Next week, here goes.
Next week is a holiday week.
Yeah.
And right in the middle.
Um...
And, and I'm not sure if you're ready to get the consensus of the council of what you want, with, I mean, that's pretty quick to talk to everybody and get all their stuff and then think about it, but it's good to, good to move it forward.
So, that would be Friday the seventh. Guys, could you entertain on your schedule, how about Friday the seventh? Oh. Soccer, yeah. What about, and I hate to push it out a little farther, but what about Wednesday the Is the eleven? I got you. I'm not really... I'm trying to accommodate you guys, but at the same time, my PD is on a staffing shortage, so I can't leave on certain days. So, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure it out. Um... What is the third? Monday the third. Conrad, are you here?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's look at Monday the third. What's a good time for you? And I'm being selfish, could it be, could it be maybe nine o'clock so I could go train in the morning before I come up here? Conrad?
Yes, sir.
And let's shoot for the third at nine. All right. And I want to thank you, Ramon, for your time and explanation. Guys, before we go to seven point eight, it is eight oh nine. Let's take about a five-minute recess.
Yes, sir. As you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission was supposed to consider this at their last meeting, but we didn't have a quorum. I want to remind the council that you have three choices. This is a ministerial function. You can approve it, you can approve with conditions, and if you have conditions, you have to be specific about what those conditions are. Or you can disapprove, and if you disapprove, you have to specify what sections of the subdivision they failed to comply with. I've reviewed this, Doug DePra has reviewed this application, and it complies with our subdivision regulations. Staff has recommended approval subject to one condition. We have an interlocal agreement with Kaufman County. Kaufman County interlocal agreement requires that we use their thoroughfare plan for developments that are in that part of this, of our jurisdiction that's in Kaufman County. It's different than ours. The developer in this case used our thoroughfare plan for their design, and it's consistent with that. And I would like to amend my app, my recommendation by saying that I am working with the commissioner from Kaufman County for this part of the, of our jurisdiction that's in Kaufman County, and it's, and the staff planner at Kaufman County, to get them to agree to an amendment to the interlocal agreement that will allow us to use our thoroughfare plan for those developments in Kaufman County, but within our ETJ. And I would like you to, I would like the council to consider that as a second option. If the, if the commission agrees to the modification of the interlocal agreement to allow us to use our thoroughfare plan, then that'll give, these people, they go ahead to do their next set of engineering requirements. If not, and I expect to have the answer by the end of the month, so that's just by Friday. No, this, this week. And, and what they, what the staff has done is they have, if the commission agrees, then we'll have to amend the ILA. That will might happen on Friday, but we'll get the direction that they, that we can amend it on Friday, and I'll put that package together through the consideration and the commissioner's court if that answer is yes. But if the answer is no, then they're obligated to comply with the Kaufman County thoroughfare Yes, ma'am? One other thing, I talked to the applicant, and, and as you know, this is the Mantellus Group, and Mann Road, this is, this sits on top of Mann Road, starting at five forty-eight and coming back, not, not all the way to Neal Road. So, what their intention is, is when they start the work on this section of Mann Road between five forty-eight and Neal, there'll be signage out on Mann and on Neal that says you can't turn right because it's under construction. And I think one of the questions that Ms. Balkan asked me is, are we going to have fire service? Once they get the infrastructure in place and the hardscape, the roadway surfaces, then we will actually have a loop that provides full emergency vehicle access to the entirety before they ever put the first house on the ground. Yes, ma'am, and that's, one of the things I ask them to start with is, how are we going to get our emergency vehicles in and through there, because you can't have a dead end that's more than a hundred and fifty feet off? And the answer to the question. Via, it's a viaduct, but, but it's, but it's, but it's moving water, so it could be an The city of Dallas has a three-hundred-foot-wide easement that is delivering two eighty-four-inch tubes of water from Lake Balkan to the processing plant over in Sunnydale. You know where that's at? And these folks had to get permission from the city of Dallas to do this. They have done all the other required investigations and gotten the required responses from the city, so, but that's, it's a big deal, and I've known that's been out there for a long time, and if, if the CCN was for Dallas, we could have hooked up, like, for water.
So, that viaduct is buried? Is it buried below ground?
Yes, sir. It's all, it's all below ground.
What's the depth on that?
Honorable mayor and council members, my name is Jesse Craig, I'm...
Honorable mayor and council members, my name is Jesse Craig, I'm here representing the host group, some of you have met. Obviously, a little bit, but I wanted to come here and get available for any questions. I might try to break outlining it, you know, the primary purpose for us moving forward with this. We're looking for smaller preliminary plattes to keep going on that. The city of Dallas, I believe, crossing, which our engineers does, we have to make a problem in the process. So while we're still working through other items with regard to the development, I'll make sure we're moving forward on this currently. If you have any questions, happy to answer. Uh, I, I'd just add a little bit, because I, I love the, we, the size of road based on the project. And this is, uh, we all have done that project. Well, it can be, uh, maintained by the district. It's like, according to the district, it's, it's standards, so it does also include, although not required. It's required if there's a, it's, it's not, uh, outside. And it gets open to open space, it's designed to have nice, you know, impact. So, um, second, like I said, the ability to make that, I should, I should, um,
I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for a little over sixteen acres of land for the development of a twenty-five lot residential subdivision with nine open spaces. With the condition of approving the McFlinden Chisum thoroughfare plan.
Was it just ours or?
amended.
Or the?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the applicant's request for approval of preliminary plat for a little over sixteen acres of land for the development of a twenty-five lot residential subdivision with nine open spaces, eight hundred lots, with condition for, um, McFlinden Chisum thoroughfare plan or the Kaufman County thoroughfare plan.
All right, I've got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's open for discussion, discussion?
Just, just for clarification. This could go either way, is the way I understand it. It, i- i- if Kaufman comes back and they say, no, we don't want to modify or amend our ILA, then it, it will resort to being an eighty foot wide entryway. Am I correct? It will be eighty, eighty feet wide, correct? Okay. And then if they do amend, then it's sixty. So, and you're open to the decision-making process here, I assume, tell us. I told her it was good to have a second skill, it was good to have a second skill.
When we were talking about the fire, the fire engine, so eighty is what we would like to go to, but not fifty.
So sixty is what our thoroughfare plan calls for.
Okay.
And that's what they design.
Okay, what was Kaufman County, was that eighty?
Eighty.
Okay, so we want sixty, I'm sorry, I flipped it, I apologize, yes. So our residential thoroughfare plan?
And I think the city of McFlinden Chisum's objective here is to have a transportation system that provides for emergency access, that will provide the kind of services to the future residents of this subdivision that we expect. And that's either gonna be in a sixty foot right of way or an eighty foot left, either one of those works.
All right, any other?
No, I'm just gonna make, um, I don't think the council can take action on this. So I've just heard that the P and Z has not made a recommendation that in me or whatever it was about this. I think per ten point oh two point oh oh five eight four of our code of ordinances, it says the Planning and Zoning shall make a recommendation on preliminary plats, approval, denial, stipulation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Well, they haven't done that.
Hold that thought, Mr. Coker.
You know, state law kinda trumps us in this case, because it says that if we fail to take action within thirty days after either the Planning and Zoning Commission has made a recommendation, or not, then it's automatically approved.
Says that.
So I think we need to, now that we've got Planning and Zoning, which planned again before, I, I would infer that it will be within thirty days. Um, and we'd like to, because we have thirty days after that, but per our ordinances, I don't think the council should consider this.
I, I, we don't have the time to, to get an additional thirty days.
If, if P and Z does whatever they're gonna do within thirty days, the council will operate.
When did the clock start?
The clock started clicking, when they submitted the application on May sixth.
So May sixth, so thirty days from May sixth, right?
I mean, uh, June sixth, June sixth. June sixth.
So if it started clicking June sixth, thirty days from there, basically is July?
Fifth. Fifth. So, mayor.
We have to be, you can't be, because it was a holiday.
You have, you have to, you have to make it, and it's only one of three that you have to make. And I very seldom do this with Mr. Hollis, because I truly respect his opinion. But in this case, I think the state law supersedes our requirements. And if we fail to take action, then it will be approved, the way it sits, as it is today. And that's not even consistent with the ILA that we have with Kaufman County, and we've agreed to do subdivisions in Kaufman County, subject to that part of the thoroughfare plan of their, of their county.
He's absolutely right about the thirty days. We still have to follow our ordinances. So I think even if you approve it tomorrow, it's completely right. That's my, the reason why, is because it's very clear, and our ordinance, because the, uh, P and Z must, if, if we look up, ten oh two point oh five eight four, uh, the P and Z has to approve, shall, is that, I think it's even said shall, which is a month. We have to follow our own ordinance, and if that is more restrictive than state law, it's okay. It's certainly not less restrictive. The only time it would be preempted, state law would compromise, is if it was less restrictive. That is an extra requirement, if you will, because we don't, we're a general law city, so we don't have to adopt a P and Z to create it. We can choose to, because it's general law. So we did it, and so we're meeting it, making it more, um, restrictive. So I would encourage to have a P and Z meeting.
Fifth, sixth, whatever. Give it, give it, give it to Cinderella. If P and Z, you know, meet before then, our next council meeting is not really the luck.
Yeah, but then, no, no, once, P and Z has thirty days.
So their, their decision adds to the clock if they can get one.
Yeah, each, each of, if we have a P and Z, they get thirty days, and the council gets thirty. If you don't have a P and Z, then it's just basically thirty days.
Okay, so can we go ahead and, wait, is July fifth, right, July fifth?
I think that's Wednesday.
And Mr. Coker, by that time, you'll, you'll have, uh, some notification from, um...
Meeting, council or P and Z?
P and Z.
So if P and Z takes, if P and Z can meet before then and take their act, then we can, okay, that's what I, that's what I wanna make sure of. So here's, here's the thing, and P and Z's gotta be published just like us, we have so many days, right? Well, then they need to, they need to get it done before, they need to get it done before July, before Dallas too. I know, but I'm saying before July, so we're not waiting till the very last day to find the meeting. And I hate to put people off thought, Mr. Roddy, I know you're here in part of P and Z. Thank you, guys can wrangle it together and get a meeting on it.
Conrad's gonna do that tomorrow.
No, we may have, we're gonna have to call a special meeting for this.
I mean, I don't think, they shouldn't take it, this time.
No, it's just that you guys, fifteen twenty minutes, it's just July.
And at that point, you'll have, according to Mr. Coker, you'll have the thoroughfare plan, either one, to be able to do it that way. Yeah, you should have, you can back them up.